We're on.
Lots of two things.
Mayor, you're on.
Welcome to the pre-meeting. And I know that there's a few questions that have happened. Ms. Simmons, do you have anything?
No, sorry. Do you want me to ask it here or out there? I just sent a couple of questions to staff regarding, I can't remember what item it was on our agenda, but it was for the auto contract and why we are amending and not regaining. What is the benefit?
Apologies. I didn't mean to.
You got stuff.
Joe Merzinski.
Thank you.
Lead manager. Mayor, pro-sent Council. My name is Joe Merzinski. I'm the lead manager for the city. Great question, Councilman. On two reasons. One is cost. Our current vendor, we realize $40 per hour labor rate for body repair and paint work. It's about a 30% savings over the industry standard across the city. And two, the quality of work and the partnership that we've held with this particular vendor over the last few years. So would be our recommendation, go forward with the amendment as opposed to going out.
But with the industry standard, I mean, how do we know that if we're not regaining it? Right? Like, how?
So the national average for body work and paint work is right around $58 to $60. We've surveyed a few of the body shops that we've used for some overflow work. Right now, Elite Collision, their labor rates are $56 an hour. And again, really goes back to the quality of the work that we get for the cost that we do. Body work, I don't know if any of you folks have ever had to have body work done to your P O Ds, but it's delicate work. And really, it's either good work or poor work. And we find that the quality of work is rather excellent with this particular vendor. We have a lot of trust. We've had a partnership with them for going on four years. This will be our fifth year.
And when is it? When is it? And not just specific to this. When do we decide it's better to amend versus going out? I mean, that, there has to be some parameters as far as?
Well, sure. You know, we can survey the cost for the local area. Again, this would be the last and final amendment on this particular contract. I don't see us finding a vendor out there that will charge us $40 an hour labor rate.
Okay, thank you. The other question was regarding the number of people that we helped per quarter for, oh, gosh. Cody, you're gonna have to remind me.
For Colorado legal services.
Yes.
And the residents in the city of Westminster specifically. Each one of those reports is just for that period of time. So five were served in first quarter and 12 in second quarter. It's total 17.
And those are new clients? They're not rollovers from? Okay, perfect.
There's a total of 30 then.
Yeah. Okay. That was my two questions.
I'll free to ask them in public. I just didn't know if you needed any further information. Councilor Miller?
And so my question was for item 10B regarding the supplemental appropriation for the Community Development Block Grant Fund. I was just searching to understand it a little bit better. I read it several times and I'm still trying to understand the, yeah, maybe you could just, you know, and I'll ask a question of you. Thank you.
Great question. So originally, the asset was booked in our accounting system. And Larry, just stop me if I get any of the pervert wrong. At the purchase price, which was 1.2 million. We have needed for some time to do an adjustment to give a fair market value for the property. So therefore, we went out and looked at comparable properties, did a comparison analysis. Also, the fact that the structures are no longer on the site. So that was contributing to some of the value as well. In addition, this goes back to 2004. And that was before my time, obviously. But I went back and read the minutes. But it was acknowledged at the time that council was buying the property for more than its appraised value because there was an existing business there. So they were compensating that business owner for relocation as well.
As part of the purchase price?
Yes, because the business owner owned the property.
Interesting. Okay.
So now we're fast forward 20 some, or almost 20 years. And we are at a point where we need to book it at its fair market value rate. So as an accounting exercise, we need to bring that value down.
Because we demolished the structures on the site?
Yes.
Several years ago?
Correct.
And then, okay. And now it's? And we did another appraisal?
We didn't do a formal appraisal, but we did go into CoStar. We didn't look at similar sized properties in within a one mile, two mile radius of the site and also conferred with the property praiser as well.
Okay. And from where is this? Where are we pulling the 900,000, 1,000,000 from? Or is that?
I think it's an accounting exercise.
Sure, I could describe that. And perhaps Lindsay would like to offer just a little window into maybe the future of the site, some of the work she's excited to be doing. Well, cash dispersment was made to acquire the property. The property went on our balance sheet at a certain dollar amount, as you just described. And it's been sitting there as an asset for that period of time. We now know that the value is less. So it's merely a write-off, a charge down of the amount. So there's no cash involved in this. It's just merely an accounting adjustment that needs to be made as a part of the city's financial audit. We need to describe that it's presented at fair value as a matter of our financial books and records. So as Lindsay described, it is merely an accounting entry that is necessary and requires the approval of the city council because it amounts to an expense, although it's a non-cash expense. It's not held on our books at that level. But I think it might be useful for council and the public to learn a little bit about, maybe some of the future and some of the work they're doing.
One clarification question. So was the $1.2 million fully from C D B G funds?
No, it was not. Actually, some city money was used to purchase that. I found that most of the C D B G money was actually used to fund the cleanup and not for acquisition. Only about 400,000 of that was used for acquisition of a final parcel in about 2015. And the rest of that was spent on the cleanup.
Okay, so we don't owe money on?
Well, if I could, I.
Please.
When I first got here, about three and a half months ago or so, this was, I asked staff, you know, what are some of the hot button issues with suppliers? And this one came up. You know, we don't want to pay back 1.8 million to the federal government. I said, no, certainly not. Is there a way that we can avoid doing that? So we have been diligently working and talking to HUD, to the regional office and federal level to see if there's something else that we can do with that property that would avoid paying back the 1.8 million dollars.
Can you differentiate the 1.8 million from the 1.2 million that was?
To be determined. As you know, probably know from working with HUD, you know, it's a process. It's a journey. So we have been walking down, starting to walk down the aisle with them and gotten to the point of, okay, maybe you don't owe us 1.8 million. Maybe, worst case scenario, you might owe us the market value, which was promising, but still not zero. So we're still working with many departments in the city to, and we'd love to come back and brief you when we have something more concrete. But I'm trying to work on a different approach so we don't have to pay any money back. Yeah. But you might know, you know, it takes relationship building with HUD representatives. And so we've been starting, like I said, starting down the aisle to the altar with them.
Anyone else, Councilor Zike?
I just have a quick data analysis.
Councilor Baker?
Okay. I attended the R M M A, which is the Rocky Mountain Airport. And they went forward with the consulting fee for this year to fund the study as well as the consultant to do the minutes for, the minutes and the administrative items for the group. They also adopted the work plan, so that will be moving forward. There was a video that was shown. Those that were online were not able to hear it. They could see it. So those, that should be posted on the R M M A website. And then I asked for it specifically, just so I could send it to you all so that you can see it. I guess looking or hearing from the response afterwards, I guess it was a really good presentation, but I couldn't hear it. So that, that will be coming to you all once I get the link for that. And then they are looking at maybe increasing yearly dues. They did increase it just this year for those consultant fees, but they are looking to increase to 3,600 per annual fees starting next year. So that is a conversation that we're starting to have. And that, that's it.
Anyone else, anything? We have lots of proclamations tonight. I would just suggest when you know you're, whoever's the first one, then whoever's geared up for the second one and so forth, just be ready to get up and hand over the mic and transition as best we can and keep the ball rolling.
Okay.
Have fun until seven.
And then we'll be in order because if Emmens gets up here, she can do that.
Where are we?
Oh, she didn't get on. I'll get off because you didn't get on. Okay. Jason's birthday. Oops. Sorry, I was going to call the meeting and I don't see our interim city manager tonight. Welcome to tonight's meeting of April 11th, 2022. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nirmela.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move to excuse Counselor Seymour as he's not available tonight.
Do I have a second? Counselor Baker, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counselor Seymour from tonight's meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to consideration of minutes of March 28th, 2022. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2022 meeting as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March 28th meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to presentations. Tonight, our first person up is Counselor Emmons presenting the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
All right, could I have CASA representatives up here with me, please? I'm going to have you introduce yourselves because you're very important role to CASA.
I'm Paige Otto. I'm with CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties, and I am the Community Engagement Manager. Good evening.
I'm Leah Varnell. I'm the Executive Director of CASA of Jefferson, Gilpin County.
Hello, I'm Donna Olenji. I am the Chair of CASA 17th District, Judicial District. Thank you for allowing us to be here.
And thank you for being here and representing CASA. As a current CASA, which is a court-appointed special advocate, this proclamation is near and dear to my heart, and I'm very honored to be able to present it. This month, we are observing child abuse prevention, and every April, the National Child Abuse Prevention Month is observed to raise public awareness of child abuse and neglect, recommitting efforts and resources aimed at protecting children and strengthening families, and promoting community involvement through activities that support this cause. CASA is a volunteer-based nonprofit organization that trains community volunteers to represent the best interests of our most vulnerable residents, our children, who are victims of physical, sexual, or emotional abuse and neglect. Volunteer CASA advocates are appointed by judges to be a voice for children in court. The desired result is that children are placed back into their home with their parents, but if that isn't able to happen, the goal is to place them with a permanent and safe, loving home. Research has shown that if a child has a CASA volunteer, he or she is more likely to succeed in school and adjust to change and feel a sense of purpose in work. They are also half as likely to re-enter the foster care system. On an average, 12 children each day are removed from their parents and placed temporarily in child welfare systems in Colorado. Last year alone, 4,857 children were assigned to CASA volunteer to walk beside them, representing approximately 37%, just one-third of the children that are in the system. If you're looking to volunteer for this opportunity, please consider becoming a CASA. We are very short. Please reach out to me or to the website. There are 18 locations within Colorado, particularly for this volunteering opportunity. But there is Jefferson County and one for Adams County and Broomfield County, and that website is casas17.org. Is there anything else that you'd like to add that I may have missed?
Well, thank you, Lindsay, for your service as a volunteer with our program for the last five years. She's on her third case, so thank you so much. And I just wanted to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, and interim city manager for having us tonight and for taking the time to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month here in the city. We know that it's such an important step for our community to be aware of how we can strengthen families and support children. And if you are interested in learning more about becoming a volunteer, we are having an event next week, Late of Hope, and this is a great opportunity to learn more about what all that entails. So I definitely encourage you all to go on our website and look at that. And I do want to turn it over to Donna so she can say a few words as well.
Thank you, Paige, and thank you, Lindsay, for your ongoing continued support for CASA, and thank you to the city council. As a resident, I am particularly proud to be here tonight and to know what our city council does to support CASA. And thank you for the pinwheel garden. I love that. I'm going to appreciate that. So anybody who is interested will be welcome. And the luncheon is free, so hopefully if you are interested, join us. And I'd like to offer my invitation to Mayor and Mayor Protem to join me at my table if you have time. I will send you some messages so you can keep it on the clock. Thank you, Lindsay.
And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from harm and fear, and whereas all children do not receive appropriate care, in fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. And whereas every responsible person would agree that even one abused child is too many, and it is up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end abusive children through awareness and action, and whereas Westminster is dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and advocacy programs such as CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious, and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas our community is stronger when all residents become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Now, therefore, I Nancy, or, excuse me, now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of Westminster City Council, hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge all residents, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses to work collaboratively to increase their efforts to support families and prevent child abuse. Sign this 11th day of April 2022.
Thank you all, and to you, Counselor Emmons, we live CASA through when you're having tough times with your little kiddos and need to just share what you can share. We just thank you for your time, too.
Can Amy Miller with the Jefferson Center join me? And if anybody showed up from Community Reach? So I get to do the proclamation tonight for mental health awareness, and so I have a couple of small statistics I wanted to share. It's one in five adults experience mental health disorder in any given year, which equates to about 43.8 million people in the United States. That's a huge amount of people. You know, if you look at any of the statistics, the amount of increase in mental health problems that we've seen since pandemic has been pretty substantial. So I'm pleased to be able to do this as I actually have a daughter who has mental health ailments that we deal with at home, so know all too much about this area. And I'm very pleased and proud that the city council, for the last four years since I've been here, we have made it a mission of ours to make sure that we're taking care of our people's mental health as well as the community. So we welcome you.
Thank you so much. My name is Amy Miller. I'm the Director of Adult Outpatient Services at Jefferson Center for Mental Health. And we just want to express our appreciation to the city, the city councilors, for issuing this proclamation. Mental health is such a major concern, but still has so much stigma surrounding it. Last year, we touched the lives of 32,000 people, but we know that more than half will never seek out treatment for their mental health conditions. And so it's such an important act to have proclamations like this to bring awareness and decrease that stigma around mental health concerns. So thank you so much for having us here. And if you're interested in learning more, our website has great information. We have upcoming mental health first aid training, suicide prevention training, and you can find that at jcmh.org, and we have our trainings listed there. So thank you so much.
For the work that you do. So you can look up also more about Community Reach, which is a partner here in the city, and that provide a lot of these important services. So, you know, I think that when we talk about the stigma, for me, that's also something that's very important because a lot of the things that we deal with in the community, be it homelessness, crime, a lot of it is a root cause is mental health and gone untreated. We see a lot of the problems that people talk to the city council particularly about. So that's a good first step in making sure that people feel comfortable to go get help because, you know, a lot of times people are afraid to or they get this stigma they've got. Appreciate you bringing that out. So with that, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Westminster recognizes that our crisis response infrastructure must also be strengthened to ensure that those facing acute behavioral health challenges can be connected with necessary services. And whereas the city of Westminster recognizes that we must dramatically expand the supply diversity and cultural competency of our mental health and substance workforce to increase the opportunity and incentive to seek professional help when needed. And whereas the city of Westminster recognizes that it is imperative we promote better pathways to care and make it easy as possible for our community and employees to access mental health care through their insurance coverage while integrating mental health services and support systems into a variety of settings, online and in the community. And whereas the month of May will include several activities designed to increase awareness of mental health, programs and resources from toolkits that are developed by Mental Health America and the National Alliance of Mental Health. And whereas the Westminster employees are in large part responsible for the city's national and regional reputation for quality, progressive municipal government that provides core services and fosters economic resilience for our community to thrive. Now, therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim City Westminster Mental Health Awareness Month, signed this 11th day of April 2022.
I have Leah Hints and all volunteers that volunteer in this city come on down. I don't care if it's been an hour, if it's been 32 years, if it's been two days, come on down. Are there any of you not telling the truth out there? The CASAs, you CASAs get up here. You're volunteers. Get up here. I'll come and get you. And Ms. Patricia McIntyre, you have led all of the people in singing and everything. You're going to volunteer and be our speaker for the Armed Services Garden Day. Get down here. That's right. You've had many years of service. And Louis, you should be up here also. Yes, yes. I know how much you do. Now, do I have to pick out anybody else? I'll do it. All right, I'm going to start the microphone down here. Tell us your name and what you do.
Logan. I'm with Paige Otto. I'm with CASA, so we are a volunteer organization.
I'm David Amin. I am the Chairman of the Special Programs and License Board, and we generally deal with licenses.
I'm Charlie Mo, and I am also on the board with David.
I am Kathleen Jackavetta, and I help out in the records department.
John Paul Hamus. I help teach the beginners how to play football for City of Westminster.
George Smith with the Westminster Historical Society.
Judy Smith, often on with the Shredathon.
Diane Spence. Can I work?
Donna Olenji. I'm a CASA advocate. I'm a CASA chairperson. I'm a city advocate. I've been on client commissions, diversity, city commissions. I can't remember all of them. Longtime volunteer.
I'm Pat McIntyre, and I directed a 44-voice senior choir for 20 years. I don't know why I'm up here, but I am.
Debbie Ostrm, a victim's advocate.
I'm Denise Sandeski, I'm a victim's advocate.
And Steph, 1,400 Easter eggs.
Kelly Schellinger, and I'm a victim's advocate.
Vicki Deichel, a victim's advocate.
Chris Sanborn, victim's advocate.
Snowbuster, yeah. Snowbuster and Great Global Cleaner.
Rance Okada, Farm Instructor for the Best Police Department in Colorado.
Captain Pascoe, Westminster Historical Society.
Lou Pascoe, Westminster.
Thank you all for being here. You are, I think of you as threads in the quilt, and if you weren't there, we'd have a lot of holes in our quilt for the city of Westminster. No matter what you do, how long you do it, you help hold us together because you know staff, they're working more hours than they're being paid. staff, they're, they're working more hours than they're being paid for, and they can't do it all. And so the hours that Leah is going to share with us, that you have given us and the amount of money you are to us, you are priceless in my mind. So the council and I thank you from the bottom of our hearts because we wouldn't be the city we are if any one of you was missing. Leah?
Well, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Volunteer Westminster, I would like to thank our volunteers, each of whom are standing here today for their invaluable contribution to our city and to our community. In 2021, the city partnered with close to eight hundred volunteers. These volunteers accrued a total of twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-three hours served. In case you're wondering, this is the hourly equivalent of over five hundred thousand, but five hundred and seventy-seven thousand hours. This evening, we honor you all and your incredible dedication to the volunteer program. And with that, Happy Volunteer Appreciation Week. We have volunteers standing here today, and the audience are standing here with me, representing many, many hours of service in the city's departments, including parks, recreation, and libraries, police, human resources, as well as volunteers who serve on our city's boards and commissions, including the Special Permanent License Board and the Environmental Advisory Board. The volunteers whom I'm going to ask to stand forward to accept this proclamation are Debbie Oster, Volunteer Victim Advocate, with a total duration of thirty-two years of service for the city of Westminster. I would also like to ask Vicky Deachel to stand forward, also a Volunteer Victim Advocate. Vicky has twenty-one years of total service with the city of Westminster.
Amazing. So you two special people, come on out. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force of more than sixty-three million is a great treasure and priceless. Whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of April seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2022, City of Westminster National Volunteer Week, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. Picture time, so come on, go back. Get around here. Yeah. Yep, if you're short, get on the riser there so he can get a good picture. Thank you, everyone.
You wouldn't know what these people did unless you had the clues standing with them. That's who we have here tonight. We cannot overemphasize the importance that the nine-one-one operators make to the adequate functioning of public safety within the city. They are the first person you contact. They are the ones who have to have the knowledge, the compassion, the grit, and the intelligence to sort out those calls and send them quickly to the right place. We have been of the recognizing the importance they made way back from the eighties. So it's only fitting and appropriate that we recognize them now. Chief, if you could start.
Interim Police Chief Norm Hubbard.
Interim Deputy Chief David Lester.
Communication Supervisor Marina Soto.
Communication Supervisor Sarah Geigos.
Communications Administrator Laura Mitchell.
Communication Supervisor Emily.
I'm the Communications Administrator. These folks on our dispatch team, including our supervisors, are really the lifeline between our community and our responders. I don't believe public safety could do the job without them. It's amazing team, I'm very proud to be a part of it. And we also couldn't do it without the support of council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the community. So thank you so much for being here. This week means so much to us. We are behind the scenes, and so the appreciation that you've given us and all the things that really, really mean a lot to us. Thank you so much.
And now I will read my favorite task, the proclamation. Whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunicators. Because emergencies can occur at any time that, that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or other critical services. And whereas, well, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Westminster Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first, public safety telecommunicators are the, are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by really monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of Westminster have contributed substantially to the apprehension of really criminals, the suppression of buyers, and the treatment of patients. And whereas, each really telecommunicator exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism of their job assisting those in need. Now, therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do really hereby proclaim April tenth through April sixteenth of 2022 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And really call upon the people of Westminster to express their really sincere appreciation for the service and dedication of our, of our telecommunications employees. Signed for this 11th day of April 2022, Nancy McNally. Okay, and now therefore the picture.
These, I think these folks are also people who, you know, you don't hear a lot about animal management staff until you need them, and they play such an important role in keeping our community safe. I think, you know, they probably hear most of the complaints that might come in in the community, dogs barking and lots of more difficult calls like animal neglect and dog bites and, you know, they even helped me out one time when I had a little prairie dog stuck in my window. Well, lots of different calls, but they also, in addition to helping manage our, our calls regarding animal complaints, they also manage dog vaccination, animal vaccination, dog licensing, allowing chickens and bees permits in the, in the community, and, and managing how we interact with wildlife. So a lot of different aspects of our community, and I'm very appreciative of the work that you do. And I know it's not something that we think about often, but they are there for when we need them. And I am going to have the chief introduce the team.
So interim Police Chief Norm Hubbard.
Animal Management Supervisor Kelly Dillon.
Animal Management Officer Chris Brannigan.
Animal Management Officer Sam Owen.
Animal Management Officer Reginald Park.
Animal Management Officer Kami Richard.
Animal Management Officer Don McNette.
Still interim Deputy Chief David Lester, as of now, anyway.
Yeah, I just, this is a great team that I'm proud to be a part of. Not only do they provide a high level of service with specialized training and specialized techniques, but they're one of the most compassionate and great people to be around. The interactions that I see that they have with the community from those community events to just their daily operations, simply to be noted. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, I will read the proclamation. Wait a minute, I grabbed the wrong one. All right. Okay. Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second full week of April each year as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials through the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal management officers for the dedicated service they provide to citizens, public safety, and public service agencies and departments across the nation. And whereas every day, animal management officers and shelter attendants put themselves in potentially dangerous situations to protect the health and welfare of all kinds of animals and the public. And whereas in addition to fieldwork, Westminster Animal Management Officers deliver critical community programs such as outreach events, vaccination and microchip clinics, pet care presentations, humane education and rabies clinics. And whereas in 2021, Westminster Animal Management Officers handled over seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven calls for service and successfully returned one hundred and eighty-five animals to their owners instead of going to the shelter. Whereas Westminster would like to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for the outstanding service the Westminster Animal Management Unit provides on a daily basis to the citizens and specifically recognize the dedicated employees for their work. Now therefore I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim April tenth through sixteenth, 2022, as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and call upon the people of Westminster to express their sincere appreciation for the service and dedication of our animal management teams and employees. Signed this 11th day of April 2022.
I know many of them have their own pets, but Kelly, give that Nero and Jax a kiss on those little choppers that they have. I see their pictures and I just want to kiss, kiss, kiss them. They keep me laughing.
Hello? And real quick, your title is Open Space Stewardship Specialist. Very special. So, so I'm here to proclaim April twenty-third as Westminster's Earth Day Celebration. Now, Earth Day is actually on the twenty-second, but the twenty-third is a day where we've chosen to basically have all, all, all of you, you know, you have family, you have neighbors, you have friends, gather, as, as Mayor McNally said, the seventeenth through the twenty-third is Volunteer Week. That twenty-third, that Saturday, would be a perfect opportunity for you to get your family and friends together, go out there, volunteer for the city to help pick up trash, and it's so important. And I would love, Julia, if you could explain why it's so important.
So right now, we have about one thousand, one hundred volunteers signed up for Great Global Cleanup, which will be about over three thousand hours of trash cleanup happening between the seventeenth and the twenty-third. We have almost every park, every open space covered and a lot of streets, which is really exciting. And there is just no way that our staff can keep up with the trash that blows in from stores, high schools, et cetera. And so we are so thankful for everyone willing to go out with their families, their classmates, their worker, court groups, et cetera, to keep Westminster clean and beautiful.
Special bonus, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if you volunteer for the city that week, you get entered to have a tree in your honor. So you can win a tree. I, I, I think that's pretty cool to have a tree. And a hot dog, and a hot dog. Free supplies, you know, a lot of wins, there's a lot of wins. Okay, so whereas Earth Day is an important date for environmentally conscious citizens all over the world, and whereas the city of Westminster has proven itself to be dedicated to environmental responsibility and sustainability, and whereas Westminster has planned and organized Great Global Cleanup and a celebration to bring information, insight, and advice to participants, and whereas the caring citizens of our community are willing to do their part to learn about the various programs available to them. Now therefore I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim April twenty-third, 2022, as Westminster Earth Day Celebration in the city of Westminster, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join together to learn, participate, and celebrate the efforts being made by residents in the city.
Thank you to everyone that we recognized tonight. Thank you to everyone that we recognized tonight. Truly, you are priceless to this community, no matter what you've helped with, and many of you help in more than one area. It is truly okay if you don't spend the rest of the night with us, and if you would like to leave. It's now time for public comment. It's your time to come up and share your thoughts with us. So, I understand we have one person requested to speak live and one voicemail.
The person who requested to speak live virtually is not online, so I'll go ahead and call the speakers in the chambers, if that's okay.
Okay.
The first speaker on the list is John Romelfinger. I'll go on to the next one. The next speaker is Bill Teeter. Okay, Debbie Teeter speaking, welcome.
Yeah, I didn't even tell you. Thank you, thank you council for letting us have this time. On April, and I, it's good, one thing's gonna choke me up. On April 2nd, my phone started going off with texts about what's going on at your house. There's ambulances, there's police cars, there's Excel Energy there. I got home to find my husband in a traumatic mess. He's a very strong person, but what he had witnessed was more than anybody should ever have to witness. A slingshot, which is a three-wheel motorcycle, two wheels in the front, one, if you look at the marketing, is sold as a performance vehicle. It was doing 80 going east on Turnpike Boulevard. Turnpike Boulevard is like a mini little Autobahn with curves that really feel fun as they elevate as the G-force hits you. Well, when you get to that last turn, it throws you over into the wall, which they did. When they went, immediately went across the road to the other wall, looking in the eyes of a vehicle as they were going head-on, their wheels got caught in the tensioner wire in the car, flew into the air. One of the people went 10 feet into the air, hit a tree, took the bark off. My husband was in the front yard, he heard this going on, and being the wonderful person that he is, caring about every human being, he immediately went over to see what he could do to help. He couldn't find them at first and thought, oh, good, they walked away. His brain wasn't letting him see what was in front of him. What was in front of him were two people laying in the ground, one bleeding profusely from the ears and the mouth, and the other, a young lady, which he thought was about 35, we found out she's 42. He immediately went down to give her CPR for three minutes, which seemed like an eternity to him. When the police showed up, they told him to stop, it was too late. He has to live with this. The people that live in the house have to live with the fact that two people died in their yard. They have a teenager that's suffering from mental illness, she's having a very hard time handling it. We have a memorial there, and we're all encouraging them to grieve and to find closure. The memorial is grown daily, but yet those children get to see this going on in their yard, knowing two people died. These two people made that decision, this is not the city's fault that they did. But in 2015, I came here and said, somebody's gonna die on that road. We're already losing animals. The response was to take out the signs, notified people there was a crosswalk there. Why? Because the school was gone. Forget there's a park over there. Forget that this is a constant place. This is not US 36 where we don't have control. This is not Sheridan that we share with our VADA. We have to have some kind of control here. There's an apartment building right behind our house with many single parents and children. Many people walk up our street and go to that park. I thank God to this day that nobody was in that crosswalk. These people were going so fast that they wouldn't have been able to stop. The gentleman in the car that they were heading towards, he's still shaken up to this day. My husband saw him three days after, because people just come visit and go, I can't believe this almost happened, I can't believe this also happened to me. We are asking, and my husband has a solution, to help us stop this speeding on this street before we lose a child. I've lost a cat, and I suffered online by saying, well, what was your cat doing outside? That wasn't the point. We've lost, other people have lost animals. Let's do something before we lose a child or a pedestrian in that street who is not the person driving the vehicle. Thank you.
You can't, you can't present in a problem without a solution, so. So, what I wanted to do is first, thank you guys, and mayor councillors, for listening to us on this. One of the things I'd like to do, too, of course, you know, when the first responder was there, I was really impressed. I believe it was four minutes from the time of the accident till the first responder was there. To me, it felt like an attorney, but, you know, it's, I was glad to see him show up, and so, he did really well. Following that, if you guys all have the handouts now, okay, what I'd like to do is just kind of talk about what I, I walked the street today and made some observations. So this, this wreck, obviously, people, that was a mistake. And, but we get a lot of, we see a lot of people just fly through there, and it's, it feels like lawlessness at times. So, I thought, let's, let's talk about this a little bit. Because I'm a retired engineer now, maybe I can partner with someone from the city and we can come up with a solution. But, what I'm proposing, what, what I saw right away is signage, it's very ambiguous. Take a look at the first page, what I wanted to show in that first picture, that's the location of the fatality, just for people's curiosity. You can kind of see the flower box there, just so you know, right there between the crosswalks. And so, that's, that was really, that's the scary part to me, that there wasn't any children crossing that crosswalk. And so, what I observed, though, is if you're traveling east, there's one 25 mile per hour sign. It's about 300 feet from those lights, and there's nothing else. So then you go around, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I'll just talk it through. Then you go around the corner, and the sign, there's a sign there that changes to 30 miles an hour, okay? Now, if you're going west, you come off Lowell, there's a sign that says 30 miles an hour, but then as you come around the corner, there's a blind curve sign that says 15 miles an hour. And so, that's great. But the problem is, it's still a blind curve going the other way. That doesn't quite make sense to me, why we wouldn't have it both ways. And so, that's what I wanted to bring up, is, a lot of the real issue is people coming off 80th are still in a speed mode. Really, 80th is 30 miles an hour. And so, the speed bump there, it's pictured in that crosswalk, is amazing how fast people go. Just amazing. So, and there's signage there for the crosswalk, but there's no warning signs. You're coming up on a crosswalk, you need to slow down. And so, if we look back at some of the other pictures there, as you can see, there's a signage for going west, that's great. You know, I hope people follow that. If we go to, yep? Yeah. Yeah. So, on the third, I didn't remember the page. I'm slipping already in retard. But, as you can see there, coming off of 80th on that third page, there's a 25 mile per hour sign. It's kind of hidden. And so, I think that's one we need to work on. And then I kind of, I did a Google Earth map on the last page, and you can really see the layout from what's going on there. And so, what I, what I show there is, okay, we have the crosswalk. We, I showed a sign, we're, the 25 mile an hour sign is at the top of the page. I showed down at the bottom of the page where the 30 mile an hour sign is going east, and then the 30 mile an hour sign over by Lowell going west. But then I also show that 50 mile an hour sign on one side of the road. So, the reason I circled the two areas there is, is we have one unmarked crosswalk, gets a lot of traffic, people going to the park. And then I circled the apartment building there, where all the, a lot of children and stuff. Thank God, none of them were out when that happened. And so, with that, what I wanted to propose is, let's kind of look at this in two steps, and I'll be glad to work with whoever wants to work with me on it. And we correct the signage. Let's, let's get that right. It makes sense going both ways. And then, okay, so we've done that, we've told people.
And I'm sorry, your time's up.
Time's up.
But I see that Mr. Downing is already raising his hand. He has a card for you, and I'm sure would even go out in the, in the foyer and talk with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Emily Brooks.
Welcome. Hello, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. You'll be happy to hear, it's not about water. Although I am very much looking forward to the post-meeting update on the progress of the water treatment plan options. And I do want to make a quick comment about the continued use of misleading information in the recent town hall, to sow doubt about the validity of the work performed by our utilities department. I know it's a trend to just continue to repeat false and misleading information to influence others, but I don't think it's useful, and may be undermining the credibility of this council. Now, the main topic. I'm concerned about some of the language used in your recent discussions about homeless members of our community. In reading the materials and listening to the recent meeting and last week's strategic plan discussion, where homelessness was discussed, it's clear that there is no one single cause or solution for the situations that these community members are facing. These are people facing difficult challenges. Tonight's post-meeting material regarding the work of the Adams County Colorado Legal Services Program provides a glimpse into the challenges that folks in our area are facing, and highlights the difference that timely and appropriate help can make in the outcomes. I have direct experience with family members who needed more support and care than most. My mother had an on and miss diagnosed mental illness for over half her life. It was the kind of illness that causes the fracturing of many families, although that was not the case for ours. She was lucky to have a loving and devoted husband, my father, who was also able to navigate the challenge of being employed full-time and making sure that his family was safe. Sometimes this meant she was hospitalized instead of at home, and he made sure we had a caregiver at our home to fill the gap. She wasn't properly diagnosed with the bipolar disorder she had had her entire life, until my younger brother's illness manifested during his high school years. Since this is a familial illness, the doctors caring for my brother also looked at my mom, and she and we finally understood what it was. It took a while to find the right combination of medication, and once that happened, it made a huge difference in her and our lives. My brother's case was more complicated, and the cocktail medications that kept him stable also had side effects that he found undesirable. As a result, he opted to go off his medication several times over a period of 12 years. All along, he had my parents, as well as my sister and myself, watching over him, getting him the care he needed, navigating the healthcare system, and supporting his recovery from these episodes. Even with all that, he chose to end his life at the age of 29. I know that my family was lucky. My father was a senior-level executive with a large corporation that provided excellent compensation and medical benefits, recognized that he'd always put family first, and even provided legal support when my mom had to be hospitalized against her will. He was able to pay for the private hospitals that cared for my mother and brother. When the division of the company that he led sought a new location, he was able to build the office in the village where we lived, so he could be close to home and able to get there quickly if needed. I also know that these circumstances are rare for those experiencing these debilitating mental illnesses for which there is no cure, only treatment with varying degrees of success. Many go undiagnosed, untreated, and/or self-medicated. Alcohol and drugs may be easier to get than the complicated medical care and support system needed. The reason for my sharing this personal story is that in listening to your discussions about people in our community facing the challenge of homelessness, I realized that it could have been my mother, it could have been my brother, it could have been me as a child if my father had not had the incredible strength and capacity to care for his family and made a different choice. Maybe mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, partners and friends are also listening to your discussions and comments. I'm asking that you keep this in mind as you address this difficult issue. I think you can still make plans and decisions while speaking with kindness and compassion towards individuals. I think you can recognize that a firefighter, EMS, or police officer saving someone in our community from freezing to death in bitter cold temps, if they are able, is worthwhile. I know the police officers in my hometown made a difference in my family's safety. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Next, the next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors and staff. I'd like to start off with a little feedback on the town hall meeting last week. First off, thank you for having it. I did a tenure study session last week, I heard some of the discussion. I would like to add in some additional points. Bigger venue, obviously, we talked about that, with ample parking, that is drastically needed, needs to be a little more centrally located. The introductions, when we went around, I see that as good and bad. It was good in that everybody had an opportunity, but on the other hand, it took away valuable time that people could have spoke, asked questions. So, I think we need to really think about that, possibly maybe use name tags for people when they come in the door, if they'd like to identify themselves with one of those hello, my name is type situations. Got a lot of feedback from people in the community about the video feed going down. Yes, realizing it was available the next day, but people set time aside that evening to listen to that and felt like they were gypped. Still realizing they could listen to it later, but they took time out of their life that evening to work around the schedule. The other night, you talked about round tables. I, I don't think that's the proper format. We did that before with the prior council with Herb, didn't work, bad feedback then. I don't think that's the right form to use. As far as the, the way people were called or how they were called, I think we need to go, like, like was suggested the other night, a fishbowl, a lottery, a bingo-type draw of names where people drop their name in. I know it was mentioned to have them write their question on, that's kind of impersonal. I think people would feel more engaged if they were able to get up and actually ask the question, or in case their question changed from the time they dropped their name in that proverbial fishbowl. the proverbial fishbowl. I just think that would be more personal. Out of that, something very interesting came up from one of my questions. Ethics board, why do we not have an ethics board? I believe we should have an ethics board. There have been several things that have been a little less than ethical over the past couple of years. I think it's time to reenact that. For example, Town of Erie that Councilor Nammala works for, 25,000 people, they have an ethic board. We're five times the size of that city, four and a half times the size. I think it's time we, we look into putting an ethics board in place, please. And I would like some feedback on that at some point, either from staff or from council. My next point I'd like to make is I've asked a couple of times about the late fee charges and I did get response from staff. The numbers are overwhelming. 2019, we collected $436,000 plus, 2020, $95,000 plus, 2021, $229,000 plus. The first quarter of this year alone, already $104,000. That sums up to a total of $866,745 the city has taken in. Now, when I received that, I went ahead and asked, where's that money being utilized or what is it being utilized for? I was told the bill credit and hardship program. That's a lot of money. If I read these documents correctly and I project out the last three quarters of this year, we're talking $1.3 million. Where's that money going? I personally would like an accounting of that or an audit of where that money is going, how it's being utilized. To me, it seems like that's profit and I thought our water department was a nonprofit I think that would about take care of my tonight's concerns and questions. So if staff could get back with me or someone from council could get back with me on those questions, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. And City Manager Opie, somebody who will get back, thank you.
I'm gonna call John Romelfinger again. I don't see him, but I just wanted to call him. Okay, and we have one voicemail.
Emily Offman. The recent Marshall fire and N-Car fire are a huge warning to us all about the possibility of a brush fire or ember spreading on the wind to Rocky Flat. I've read recent reporting about the difficulty of proceeding with prescribed fires in the area having not been done since 2000. I'm reassured by recent steps taken to reduce fire risk like staging the brush truck nearby all year and increasing mowing. Considering how many people in our community don't know about the Rocky Flat Superfund site, can the city address if emergency personnel, particularly firefighters, are trained and informed of the risk to themselves in our entire town should a worst-case scenario emerge? Furthermore, when was the last time the city and county assessed mass evacuation procedures if soil were disturbed and a plume spread over town? Would you consider an honest and clear public information campaign to at the very least inform residents of the risk? Let's stop waiting for a consensus to be made about contamination levels and instead focus on being prepared as a community by staying informed. A public campaign should impress upon people that we can't wait for magical green energy to save us from risks that are present today. Thank you.
Our phone caller never called in or?
No, our, the virtual speaker never, is not online. And that concludes our public commentary.
Thank you. And anyone else in the audience that maybe didn't get here in time to sign up that has anything to say? Seeing none, that brings us to report to city officials and we want to welcome interim deputy or city manager Barbara Opie. And do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Mayor, Mayor Potem, city councilors, thank you for the opportunity to provide the city manager's report. I'd like to first start by introducing myself to the members of the public who are here tonight with us and those watching on the live stream at home who may not be familiar with me. My name is Barbara Opie. I am the acting city manager while interim city manager Jody Andrews is away due to a death in his family. He will be away for a week to support his family during this time and we ask that you keep him and his family in prayers during this time. As we continue to focus on city council priorities, I would like to provide a few updates on the status of collective bargaining with our police and fire department personnel and the city's response to homelessness. We are working to confirm a date for interest-based bargaining information session within partnership with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 25 later this month. We're also pleased to report that members of the International Association of Firefighters Local 2889 ratified the proposed collective bargaining agreement last week. This, this week's packet for April 18th will include an information-only staff report that includes the proposed collective bargaining agreement ahead of the resolution that will be brought forward to city council for formal consideration on April 25th. Lastly, I'd like to conclude my report with a series of high-level actions that staff has taken in response to homelessness within the city. This is not a comprehensive summary of the work in progress, but a high-level overview. Our navigator has made contact with several unhoused people and offered them support at two encampments in the open space just north of the intersection of 72nd Avenue and Bradburn Boulevard and another encampment at the Sunset Open Space near 80th Avenue and North Street. Staff has also contacted the city's environmental and hazardous services contractor to collect trash in the area while we work to relocate those who are seeking alternative housing. We are also working to get that contractor there this week. These two locations are connected by the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad and the railroad may serve as a conduit for unhoused to travel back and forth. While this may be, will be a complex issue to solve, we continue to engage with Burlington Northern Santa Fe to partner with us in this resolution. Staff returned to the 75th Avenue Sheridan Boulevard Open Space and we're happy to report that after extensive abatement of the area, residents are again enjoying the Little Dry Creek Trail and Open Space, including two residents who were there on a walk with their dogs just this morning. A staff team is finalizing the protocol that provides our Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department, Public Safety and Municipal Court employees with clear direction on how to respond to homelessness on city properties in a manner that aligns with the values of our city and adheres to local, state and federal guidelines. I would like to take a moment to thank the members of the community who are reporting these issues to staff so we can take appropriate actions utilizing a continuum of compassion related to the unhoused in our community. We appreciate the public's patience as we work through these unique and complicated situations and will continue to provide updates on homelessness in the coming months. With that, I conclude the city manager's report for the evening. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Thank you and thanks for being here tonight. Uh, city council comments, anyone? Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you, everybody who is joining us tonight that stuck with us after the proclamation was gone. I wanted to make a couple of quick comments. So Ms. Brooks that has joined us multiple times, it's good to see you. And I certainly want to at least echo some of what, what you're saying as far as how I approach homelessness. Like I mentioned during the proclamation for mental health awareness, I certainly have that in the back of my mind with my own child anytime that, that we discuss the issue because it is a slippery slope and you never know when you're going to get some sort of element, whether it's mental or otherwise in land and in hard times. I will tell you, if you weren't in the meeting last week, Mayor and I both, and this is the first time we've had a meeting where we have our traditional comments since we did this, we were invited by Ellen Farb who works with a lot with our homeless community to go tour some of the homeless camps that we spoke about at our town hall. And so Mayor McNally and I did that about a week and a half ago. And I know that, you know, what our findings we brought back to council and that some of what we heard from acting city manager Barbara Opie. And so, you know, we've got some emails back today and it's truly a complex issue. And I think that one of the things I wanted to share about why I think it's so important, these different groups that we heard about tonight, whether it's CASA or the mental health groups, all of those groups are solutions before somebody ends up in homelessness. I know that Counselor Emmons and I both and the mayor and I'm sure others on council do a lot of work with those demographics because the, the reality of people aging out of foster care and ending up in homelessness and a lot of times having those intersects with home, uh, mental health issues, drug abuse issues, um, all that to say that I think the majority of this council actually is looking at this in a very, uh, human-based approach where we're trying to make sure that our staff is trying to connect people. I got a whole rapport of, of back from some of the camps that they went out with their homeless navigator, tried to connect those folks, which isn't easy either. I can tell you some of the findings that came back. Some of those folks aren't allowed back in some of the places that we use. Um, I'm not sure why, I'm gonna guess that some of it's choices of their own. But it's complex, we're dealing with human beings. So I think, you know, the majority of the council certainly is dedicated to making sure that, um, we try all those, those bridge and olive branch approach before we do anything like moving folks along. But at the end of the day, I can tell you that there were two different camps that we visited that were literally on one side of the track from each other. We met one young, uh, say young man, I'm not really sure how old he is. His name was John, he was a really nice man who shared with us his past, had a checkered pass, had a felony on, and that makes it hard for him to get out of that situation. However, his camp was very clean, it looked like somebody who was just camping. And then you go to the other side and there's folks that, you know, it, it was not safe for them, it was probably not safe for us to be walking through it. Um, so there, there does have to be that line and we have to, you know, be realistic about the approach, I guess is, is the point I wanted to make. The last thing that I wanted to share is a handful of us went and honored our firefighters who got awards, as well as some of our dispatch got awards. And I thought that was nice to be able to go and celebrate some of our community first responders and the great things that they do in the community. One quick story I'll share is a, they shared and I hadn't heard about this story until we were at this award ceremony. We certainly have heard a lot about the Marshall fire, um, but they talked about a man who showed up with his full gear, asked if he could fight the fire with our fire, um, crew that was down there and ended up fighting with them. I think they said for something like 12 hours, I believe is what they told us. And that man got a award, ended up that he was somebody who lived in that neighborhood and came back, got his gear and joined that, that crew and ended up back to basically a pile of rubble where his home was. But he stayed there with our crews fighting for 12 hours and it was really great to see our fire department honor that, that gentleman. So I don't remember his name off the top of my head, but that was probably out of a lot of touching, teary kind of, um, things they shared with us. That one definitely struck me as well as I'm sure it did most of the people in the room.
Counselor Nermilla.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Teters for coming up and sharing their experience and I'm sure as we all heard, it was very traumatic to experience, um, death right before their eyes and on a road where I think they've seen the potential for that happening for quite some time. And so it just brings up two questions for me. The first being is, I don't know if we offer any type of mental health counseling that the families that were impacted by this, both those that passed away as well as those that were there at the time. If, you know, if they are suffering, it'd be good to know. And yes, this is not a question, but I appreciate the fact that the Teters are willing to just share their experience of that road and hopefully our staff will definitely take a close look at the speeding that's along there because that is very disturbing to hear the speeds are so high on an area where we have, um, some, you know, low visibility and a lot of people crossing. I also just wanted to thank Ms. Brooks for sharing her very personal story and I, you know, I, I hope that we can continue to work in a very compassionate manner toward addressing those folks that are without a home in our community. You know, my, it was interesting to see how my kids interpreted seeing police officers in our neighborhood, um, interacting with a homeless person at, um, they, they turned to me and said, Mom, why are there three police officers bothering that man who's just sitting there? It, it just gave a different perspective from where, you know, we're looking at public safety and, you know, having to address calls and, you know, the efforts that we're trying to make to get people housed. So the, what I'm hoping and I would love for our council to be able to have is a, is some DEI diversity, equity and inclusive, inclusivity training so that we can have a common language to use as we're talking about addressing homelessness in our community. So I know I've requested that before, but I'll just put it out there again. I want to make sure that we are speaking the same language and we all are understanding that we are on the same side with one another. Thanks.
Counselor Yuzadi?
Thank you, Mayor, and it's good to be back. I've been gone for a week. I was on vacation. I was, it's a very foreign word to me still, but I had some time to rest and as I was on vacation, I was thinking through a lot of the issues that the city is facing and one thing that came to mind, and I just, I just want to give you some public praise, Mayor, was that Mayor McNally has been a voice regarding Ukrainian support. I've seen her, I've, I've heard her vocally and I've seen her do like, you know, like the yarn, the, the yarn mural was great. I just think it's important for government. I think one of our job descriptions that's not really explicitly stated all the time is to support and to inspire and to give hope and allyship, right? It's, you know, we have a lot of Ukrainian residents in Westminster, I've spoken to some of them who are suffering. So it's not a global issue that's so far away, it actually impacts us here and that came to mind, so just want to thank you, Mayor, for your support there. I will be volunteering and supporting and amplifying one of our neighbors. So in Broomfield, they have a program called the Afghan and Ukrainian Evacuee Task Force. It's led by one of the city councilors, but there are lots of volunteers among the community and they're spreading to other neighbors. So in Westminster, I'm going to try and help them as much as I can. There are lots of things that you can do if you're watching the news and you're horrified by what's happening in Ukraine. There, you, you don't have to give temporary housing, that's the, you know, that's the extreme. Of course, that's very useful and valuable because there are a lot of refugees coming over here, but there are lots of things that people are doing such as giving meals, right, to the refugees that are here, donating miles. So that's one thing that my, my family will be doing is donating miles that we stack up from points, right? We just, we don't use it, so we rather give that to a worthy cause. So just wanted to give a plug there. Besides that, I wasn't here last week, so I didn't have a chance to give my feedback on the town hall. I, I loved it, I loved the concept of it, I, I loved the frequency. I think the next one is coming up in a few weeks, right? And it's at Westminster High School, if I'm not mis mistaken. The one thing I would change if I had the magic wand would be that for us as city councils, as city council, I think we should speak less. And there was a lot of talking and explanation that we gave in response to questions. I think we could have had maybe 10 or 20 more questions if we just kept it 10, 10-second answers because I was there to listen and I think we can do a better job there of just sitting there and just listening rather than giving speeches. That's the one, the one critical feedback I would have. Besides that, I think it was great, it was a great turnout and we'd love to see more of that.
Counselor Smith? I mean, Emmons?
Thank you. All right, thank you to all the volunteers. I know that they have left tonight, but just wanted to personally thank them. You make Westminster a well-oiled machine and I think that, and I think that just on the top of my head, but I think I like Mayor's analogy better, that you're part of a quilt that makes a better community. So thank you for choosing to donate your time. And then I also wanted to put a plug in for our fire department. I also had the opportunity to attend the ceremony, lots of impactful stories by the end of it. I don't know if there was a dry eye in the room, so. Uh, and then I see one of our own, Mr. Burke back there, received an award, so congratulations. But it was through these stories that it's clear, clear that we have amazing personnel and I just wanted to thank our first responders for all that you do for our community and all that you sacrifice. And then my last plug is that if you are a And then my last plug is that if you are a resident of the Highland Hills District, an election is coming up. It is on May 3rd. And there are three seats that are eligible for electors. People that are running are Warren Blair, Margaret Gutierrez, Paul Page, Max Math, Don Choncho, and Randy Swanson. And this goes without saying is please vote any election, and all elections are important. And please, please, please look at your candidates on who you are electing. This is, I believe, an absentee ballot and it's kind of, I don't know if coordinated is the right word, because when you go onto the website, it's very hard to find an absentee ballot. So I will do my best at the next council meeting to come back with more information. But to be eligible to fill out an absentee ballot is, to submit one is, the deadline is April 26th, to be able to vote in the May 3rd election. Thank you.
Counselor Baker.
I too, at the fire awards, I don't think there was a dry eye, especially when one of our 911 operators was, had an award with, with the whole team that saved a gentleman, one of, a teacher, and his wife was doing CPR. And they're ready to have their second baby soon. And it just, as they read it, I'm going, how do, I can't even look at anybody. I, I had tears. I knew everybody else had tears. Just, you know, people say, well, that's their job. No. These awards tell you how they go beyond what their day-to-day business is. They care. They care about each and every community member. And these stories that we helped celebrate last Thursday night, we have wonderful people and they do an outstanding job and they care and they keep working and they keep working and they're talking to the hospital where they're trying to get to and are they going to make it in time? I start getting goosebumps even talking about, but to the entire fire team, we love you and you do great work and I'm grateful that you took the time to recognize those that were recognized the other night. We do have our next town hall. It got solidified this afternoon. It's at, and you know, we, nobody knew, I, I ran into a lot of people that had no idea where the rec center that we used, Westview, was. So if nothing else, we'll help the people see the city because the next one is at Westminster High School in the Joanne Ramsey Theater. And it'll be 7:00 to 8:30, again, 90 minutes. And part of the reason for going to try and fishbowl this time is because we couldn't get people to understand not to have five minutes worth of justifying whatever their question was. We, we were there for questions and to a certain point, I heard a lot of good comments that people learned a lot because we did take the time to answer their questions. They only hear bits and pieces and person after person, I'm still hearing from people this week, I didn't realize that. And it's because of our answers and taking the time because we, we don't do things in 10-minute or 10-second segments. It takes a little bit longer to understand some of the complicated things we're doing, especially over water. And the homeless issue isn't a 10-second soundbite. So we, we will continue to monitor how we can do each one better, but it will be the same style as last time. We will not go into roundtables and I will just say, we need to discuss this as a council. But the next piece for summer, because that's another reason we're trying to get another one of these town halls in before summer, we're going to be having movies all over the city. So I'm hoping that the city council can figure out a couple of movie nights we can go to, just be there 45 minutes before the movie. It will be another different environment to, but we will be there to be able to answer questions and talk to people. So that's all we're looking for is different ways to be where people are, not invent something new. We know these movies are going to be all around the city, so we'll look at our schedules and see what we can do there. And yes, Friday was probably a day that I could have sat there all day. Kathy Pascoe's here, that was on the right side of me because I'm a left-handed crocheter, so I was working from this end. She was working from this end and we always had somebody in the middle working towards one of us to finish these strips up. And we had our Vada knit and crochet group there and people that we didn't know and people ask on Facebook, why didn't you name everybody? Because I didn't know everybody's name. I just know they're a crocheter. And I thought it was, I can say this here because Facebook won't, can't take me off air, but we were on Hooker Street and I think with our hooks and needles, it was appropriate. That was made with 50 squares. They were made from all over the world. One of the squares is made from somebody in Spain. All of the colors you will see when you see it aren't all the same gold or yellow. They aren't all the same blue. But what is amazing is the young man, 16, from Ukraine that made the design. It is so well put together that no matter who was crocheting, what square, they all fit together to the beauty that you see. So it reminds us, and I co-op with one of the Ukraine artists here in Westminster during November and December at the Art Cottage. And I know she has family that she worries about every day. So we do care about them, but that was a fun project and the way the woman that does this now, and we're one of three cities in the U.S. that is hanging this. But she started out yarn bombing. I love it, so stay tuned. Then I went to Metro Mayor's Caucus and the AdCog meeting that was in North Glen. Those are all with mayors and the AdCog is with commissioners, mayors, councilors, and city managers. Both of them hit on the opioids, the fentanyl, and housing. So you can tell where everybody's sort of, has the same things that they're dealing within their cities. Great talks and there are some great ideas by people out there, especially around housing. Gets very complicated very fast, but it made sense to me because I used to work at a bond house for 10 years. So I understand the nuances of bonding and how you do different things. And they think they have some investors at least ready to try it. So that's it. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize interim city manager to execute an agreement for a new lease in the amount of $1,294,217 with U.S. Bancorp Government Releasing and Financing.
No, we have items 8A through F.
My bad. I told you I was half asleep today. I move to adopt consent agendas, items 8A through 8F.
Counselor Emmons, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, move the, to adopt the consent agenda, items 8A through 8F. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10A1.
Just used what I read.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize interim city manager to execute an agreement for the new lease in the amount of $1,294,217 with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Financing.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10A1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Baker.
Thank you. I'd like to delve into this a little further, like the first question is, why are we selling it for $30,000 when we just built a million-dollar building to store fire equipment?
Chief Holler, Deputy Bob Hose will join us, please. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Councilors. I'm Bob Hose, Deputy Fire Chief for Administration. Counselor Baker, thank you for the question. As we've had a note in here, the trade-in value of the older fire truck is $30,000. We're doing a replacement, basically one-for-one. The new fire truck will go to one of the stations. That truck will be bumped into reserve status and then the truck that's in reserve will be traded in and that's where we have the $30,000. So we will be basically equitable, one-for-one, as far as the storage capacity of the facilities.
Except, aren't we building a brand-new million-dollar tough shed?
We are building a storage building, that's correct. And that will, that will allow us to make, make sure we have plenty of room for all of the equipment that we have.
Well, it's going to take a year and a half to build this.
That's correct.
So this is, this whole decision is a year and a half in the future. I just find it, I was led to believe that this new storage building was additional space to store more equipment, so we wouldn't have to keep doing this.
Yes, sir. That's correct. It is, it is designed to store the equipment that we currently have in our fleet. Right now, we're actually, we're underspaced for what we have in the fleet. What's kind of keeping us afloat is the fact that as we are rotating vehicles through fleet maintenance for different maintenance items, that's allowing us to kind of be at a zero for our current spacing. The storage building that's being constructed will allow us to store another two trucks. That will make our fleet basically equitable as far as storage space and the number of equipment we have. This unit here that we're, that we're trying to purchase will be a replacement for one of those vehicles, so we'll still be net sum, basically where we're at now, with storage space and equipment.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
Oh.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. That brings us to A2.
I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 17 on first reading appropriating the lease proceeds of $1,294,217 to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund for the lease purchase of One Piece Manufacturing, Inc., aerial ladder fire truck.
Counselor Emmons, second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill 17. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Brings us to A3.
Move to authorize interim city manager to execute a purchase with front-range fire apparatus in the amount of $1,404,217 for One Piece Manufacturing, Inc., aerial ladder fire truck.
Counselor Emmons, second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10A3. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Motion passes on a 5-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill 18. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 18 on first reading, providing a supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2021 budget of the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 18. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella.
Yes, I just wanted to share the question that I had, that I was able to have in our pre-meeting, but for the purposes of just helping people understand what this is, I wouldn't mind having our Economic Development Director just come and respond to, just trying to explain, this is a little bit of a confusing item, so thank you.
And she does it with a smile on her face.
Thank you, Lindsay Kimble, Economic Development Director.
I have the microphone, so you eat it.
All right. There we go. It, you're right. It is, it is written, it might be a little confusing. So basically, there's an accounting exercise going on here. The property had what we call a book value of approximately 1.2 million. That's been on the books for about the last 15 years. It does need to be trued up so that we're compliant with accounting standards. And so as part of that, we've looked at a comparable analysis of the site, where it is today. It used to have structures, the structures are no longer there. So some of that value has been diminished. Additionally, the, the amount that was booked was the purchase price, which actually also incorporated some relocation costs for some of the businesses that were in those buildings at the time, which, you know, of course, would not be a factor in normal sale or transaction. So for that, for those reasons, the value of the property has been written down. I can kind of also think about this as a depreciation expense, so it's a non-cash expenditure. Larry, did I?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See no other questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
And Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 19. Counselor Emmons.
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 19 on first reading, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a lease agreement with Sanchez Range LLC for a food truck park located at West 70th Avenue and Grove Street, known as the Run Westy Run Food Truck Park, in substantially the same form as the attached agreement extending the lease terms by one year to account for unforeseen delays caused by COVID-19.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 19. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella.
I just wanted to say, I really like this project. So it just is a great way to activate land, just a vacant weird parcel that we currently own as the whole Westminster station area is changing and redeveloping. And so hopefully people will go check this out.
I see no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
Counselor Emmons.
I move to approve the amended employment agreement for Jody Andrews as the interim city manager.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended employment agreement for Jody Andrews. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker. Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Yazadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
And that is it for meeting, but we do have a post-meeting of the Semper Rehabilitation and Rebuild Evaluation, a 30-day update. And do we have reason for an executive session after that?
We have, Mayor, agendized an executive session for council. And if I could, the title of the proposed executive session is to discuss strategy and progress on the potential acquisition of property for rehabilitation of the Semper Water Treatment Facility and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C2 and 7, as well as Colorado revised statute 246402 for A and E1.
Thank you. And I will ask each counselor to say that you do or don't want to go into executive session and that you will keep executive session confidential. Counselor Yazadi.
Yes and yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes and yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Me, I'm a yes. Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Okay, we are, it's 8:36 and this meeting is adjourned. Yes. Yes. They've got to fix this. They've got to fix this. It's going. We are. We are now in our post-meeting of April 11, 2022, and it's 8:40. Deputy City Manager Opie.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Boarders, our interim Public Works and Utilities Director, to kick us off.
Awesome. Thank you, Barbara.
Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council. We're excited to be here to talk about Semper tonight. Sitting with me is Stephanie Blacker. She is our Acting Utilities Manager, and Amy Zimmerman, who is a senior engineer in Public Works and also the project manager on this project. If we could go to the next slide. So just some of the goals for today's meeting. This is the first of a series of meetings that we're planning with City Council. We want to make sure that you have ample opportunity, one, to get information from us, ask questions, and also provide input as we go through this process. So this is just the first of many. You won't see a lot of answers yet. We're still early on, but we're looking to get your feedback along the way. Specifically tonight, we're going to be giving a progress update on the work that's been completed. Right now, we are at about 20% complete, and we are on schedule. A lot of what's being done right now is primarily data gathering, so there's a lot of input going into the project, not a lot coming out at this point, but we are starting the conversation with you. A couple of the efforts that are happening in parallel with each other are the in-depth assessment of the Semper facility. And along with that, there's some additional effort that we'll be talking about in executive session with some of the alternatives that just have some sensitivities. And so after we do that update, we're going to be presenting some decision points. This is just an introduction in those decision points so that council has some time to ponder those points, provide any initial feedback that you might have. Let us know if we missed anything, or if you want us to look at something with a different lens. This is a great time for us to get that kind of feedback. It's also important to note that as the progress progresses, we're going to have more information to be able to share with council, and we fully anticipate that as as more information becomes available, council may reprioritize some of the policy decisions, and we are prepared to incorporate whatever policy direction as we go. Last but not least is certainly cost. That is clearly a major, important metric in just making the ultimate decision for this project. That said, that information won't be available till the end of the project when engineering is completed. We fully anticipate that council will be taking some of these policy discussions and weighing those against the different costs of the different alternatives that we'll be presenting. We'll be taking that feedback again, and we look forward to a robust conversation. So that's an intro. I'm going to pass it over to Amy, who is the project manager on the project.
Hi, everybody. Amy Zimmerman here. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members, thanks for having me. I'd like to take a step and just remind us all of our recent history before getting into where we're at and where we're going. Back in November of last year, we did stop work on the Water 2025 project.
Can you move us to the next slide, please?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. On February 14th, City Council directed staff to further evaluate the Semper Treatment Facility. We took that direction and negotiated a scope and fee with CDM and executed that amendment on March 10th. Oh, next slide, please. So to remind us of what the scope of work is, City Council directed us with three specific questions. The first question is, what is the least cost to address the greatest number of deficiencies at Semper? And what is the risk associated with implementing that alternative? The second question, what can be done for a mid-cost replacement treatment facility in and around the Semper Treatment Plant site? What are the risks associated with implementing that alternative? And third, the third question is, how do the alternatives to one and two compare to the anticipated facility on the Westminster Boulevard site? How does that look like? And what are the costs, benefits, and risks associated with all three, and how do they compare to each other?
May I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
With that, when I was reading these things, I sort of, I mean, we've all been through Semper, and we've certainly talked different ways of how to get this project done, but I really don't remember just thinking we're only going to do some of the deficiencies or whatnot. I mean, in my head, we know we need a new water treatment plant, and not that we're trying to keep expanding the life of this one. I mean, we do in a sense, because if we're doing it on that site, you shut down the site for the nine months that Northwest and Work, what can you get done in that time so that we have a part of it for summer or whatnot? But never in my, at least how I read this was, we were going after... I can't even think of the right words for it, but... Other counselors? Yes.
I mean, when I look at it to the mayor's point, if I think I hear what you're saying and what I think about it, it's really, how do you replace the whole thing in place, whether that's over phases? I don't think that our desire, at least mine, was, let's just figure out how we bandied it, so to speak. It's more, we think that there's a solution in place. You know, maybe I anticipated it might be over a series of replacing components or however you do it, but just in place, understanding that there are some big costs associated with going to a different site. So I guess is the question really, in my mind, I think is the same one you have, is, is that what we're going after?
Did I shove chocolate in my mouth? So, I mean, maybe it's the difference, understanding the difference between one and two. I kind of thought, yeah, we were headed down two at minimum in terms of looking at a, you know, some type of replacement of Semper, but maybe, you know, maybe that's wrong. So I don't, is that what Mayor and Mayor Protem just...
Yeah, the way the first one reads, the greatest number of deficiencies, to me, that's not fixing what we need to fix. You're still going to have... Why?
That's like not a replacement, right? Or what is...
Yeah.
Yeah, help us understand what those differences are.
Well, well, the way we were approaching this, question one, would be more of a rehabilitation of the existing Semper facility, and it could be a point of comparison between, well, what does, what do you get for just rehabilitating Semper versus various rebuilding options on the site? And see the stepwise differences in the benefits and the risks between those two options. Councilor Baker?
Well, it was my understanding that when we did this in February, you know, several of us on City Council were reviewing really that whole water train module, you know, taking that out of the Water 25, 2025 plan and placing it in different sites. Because even though we didn't know the total price of Water 2025, we knew that just to make pipes to anywhere else but Semper is $50 million. Okay? I think it was staff who wanted to broaden that out and said, maybe there are things we can do to Semper. And you have to remember, our really former engineer, who went to Boulder, and he rehabilitated that plant for $32 million. So I mean, the price differences were just amazing. So when it was first broached that they were going to look at really dividing the Semper plant in half or just patching other kinds of things, I think those were staff's alternatives to just building a new water train either on the MSC or across the street.
Right, and I think that I land somewhere in the middle of all that, because I guess when you say rehabilitation, you guys have multiple times, she's like a car example. So if I have, you know, 62 Nova, I don't know if that's the right model, something like that, something pretty and classic, let's go with the 57 Bel Air, because I know that exists. So say you have a beautiful body of a 57 Bel Air, and the inner workings need to be replaced. That's a rehabilitation that can make that a brand-new car. So when we're talking rehabilitation, I just want to make sure that it's, you know, how do we, are there components that we can reuse and have the inner workings basically be like, built a new one? And I think that's what you guys are going to try to look at with the engineering. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So just to clarify, these are, so the original ask, sounds like it's still the same ask, of you're giving us options, right?
Yes.
These are not to be taken together as one solution. It's, you're going to show us all the risks and benefits of each rehabbing, of replacing?
Yes. And I would say that we are going to provide multiple options under each alternate? Or did that make sense? So for answering each one, two, and three, there may be sub options.
So like a menu where we could?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to know what, in my head, it was one thing, but I'm hearing something different from you, so.
Okay. All right. Uh, I, I think we're ready for next slide, please. So, uh, in order to answer question number one, which is what, what really needs to be fixed and rehabilitated on the Semper site? CDM is working on a condition assessment. And these pictures are, are showing what they're seeing on the site. The picture on the left is a picture of an electrical box. This panel needs to be, it's, it's old and it needs to be replaced. That type of work, though, would, would represent relatively simple, straightforward work. Um, that picture in the middle is a, is a transformer located inside of an underground vault. That is also old and they need to be replaced. But again, that's going to be work that may be more on the simple side. And the picture on the right is an interesting picture showing, uh, it's in the basement level of the filter building. That wall on the right used to be the old, original construction. It was an underground and it was exterior wall. That wall on the right is, I'm sorry, on the left is the newer construction. That pipeline is connecting the two together. When we would need to go in and, um, replace either the pipeline or the valve connecting the two, that would, that would represent a more complicated construction in a confined area and connecting water bearing structures together. Uh, that would need to be coordinated with our, with our operations team. Um, next slide, please. Uh, some more on the condition assessment. That picture on the left is a motor control center. It houses the electrical and controls for the equipment located throughout the Semper Treatment Facility. Things like motors and pumps and, and mixers, things of that nature. This is an old MCC and CDM's team is helping us evaluate what is the useful life remaining in that motor control center? And, um, what it would take, what would it take to replace that piece of equipment? The picture on the left is another picture of a concrete wall. It, behind it is a, in the top portion of this is a, is a filter box full of water. And then on the bottom portion of that wall is the filter clearwell, also full of water. Now you'll see a, a white line running across that picture. That's the, that's the joint between the bottom of the filter and the top of the clearwell. That, that joint, that seam is leaking. And you can tell based on the dampness on the left side of the picture, as well as as water is seeping through that seam, it's dissolving of the minerals in the concrete mixture. And it's, uh, it's re-crystallizing as the water dries on the surface of the, of the concrete. Um, this is happening throughout kind of the eighties and nineties construction. And CDM's team is going to be helping us look for fixes on how we can address this leak and also assess if this is, if this leak is indicative of potential structural issues with the, the concrete wall, fixes there that may be implemented. Next slide, please. So in addition to working on the condition assessment, we, uh, CDM has also been compiling drawings of the Semper facility to create a 3D model of, of the, of the Semper facilities. This model will be used to help develop our various alternatives for the rehabilitation or rebuild options. And it will be used to help, you know, assess out the feasibility of implementing these options. What you see here is a picture, uh, cutout of the filter building. The lowermost level is the filter clearwell. That second level is the, is the filter boxes. The third level is where you'd walk on the, the filter gallery floor where operators would observe the filters and the filter backwashes. And then the fourth floor on the top is where the lab spaces are located. Uh, next slide, please.
By the way, please thank them for that.
Yes, they were hard at work with that, yeah.
Hoping and dreaming for a 3D model at some point. Thank you.
Awesome, yes. Uh, may I have the next slide, please? So as Sarah was touching upon, we are going to develop these alternatives. Um, and need to evaluate, well, what is the best alternative for the city of Westminster? And we're looking for some help from you and feedback on these policy categories. Um, these are where we're narrowing down and, and I want to put the teaser in your brains that we are going to be looking for, um, anything that you see that may be missing off this list. But generally, we're, 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 uh, focusing on five areas right now. The first is managing our treatment plant capacity. This is really related to meeting our distribution system demands. The second is managing our risk. Uh, we want to minimize risk where we can and where it makes sense. And third is the, is resiliency of our water treatment system, maintaining a resilient water system for changing conditions. And fourth is, what, what are our finished water quality goals? Um, that is an area for policy as well. And fifth, we want to optimize the lifespan of our existing infrastructure. Next slide. Oh, yes.
Two questions on this, or two things that I want to make sure that we're thinking about.
Yeah.
So when we talk about managing risk, and I, I think I know part of the answer to this, but I think it's still relevant. Like when you look at some of the modern risks of things that are happening today with unrest in the world, such as like cyber attacks and things like that. Um, and I believe a lot of our stuff is siloed away from, say, the internet and stuff. Um, but trying to understand what some of those modern risks are around like, uh, electric grid and things that we know, um, we're concerned on a national and state level. I think we need to, with something like our water utility, we should make sure that we're looking at those same risks. So I want to make sure that's part of the discussion. I imagine it probably is, but since you asked, I want to make sure. The other thing when we talk about, um, infrastructure lifespan, one of the things that I think makes a lot of sense if we're going to go through this exercise is, um, what's going to happen with whatever we do in 50 years or 60 years? So that the people who are here aren't, you know, have a plan in place. So it's not just like, well, this is 50 years old, but so now we got to figure something out. I mean, like, I look at this, I'm by no means an engineer, but like, you know, could you build a new concrete wall next to it? Like what, what would the plan be once things start wear, wearing out? And I think that to whatever extent we can make that part of our plan that's left for the people, uh, ahead of us makes sense.
That's a great point, yes.
I don't know if this belongs here or not, but I was just thinking, um, for the option where Semper might go away or a portion of it might, you know, like if we were to compare the Semper rehabilitation and or extension replacement to, um, a new facility somewhere else, or partially new facility on part of Semper, um, understanding the opportunity for, if there is any, for redevelopment of that site and as an asset, would that be valuable to us? Um, would it bring some public benefit? So, um, you know, I don't know how, know what it takes to cost-wise decommission something? If there are some, uh, underlying environmental issues that would, uh, you know, not allow for development to happen? But, um, that'd be helpful to understand as we're looking at all, you know, if we moved over here, did we get some benefit out of reuse of the site?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, so, um, next slide, please. So as we're talking about policy decisions, I do want to, uh, remind everyone of regulatory requirements also. Um, we do have the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements that we'll, we'll need to meet. And that's related to meeting the safe drinking water standards for things like bacteria or viruses or heavy metals, things of that nature. Uh, we're also, any new construction, we'd need to meet our building plum, pump, sorry, plumbing code requirements. And we'd also want to be keeping in mind keeping our operators safe in their working environment. And fourth, there is, um, a minimum demand that we'd need to meet when thinking about our treatment plant capacity related to keeping sanitary conditions for our customers' use. So meeting maximum indoor demand as a minimum. Uh, next slide, please. So diving in a little bit more to the, to the policy decisions and revisiting our treatment plant, treatment plant capacity. We, we know we've got to meet at least our minimum indoor demand. There's a broad spectrum between maximum indoor demand and our current policy, which is to meet full irrigation demand in the peak days of summer. Um, as we're talking about our treatment plant capacity, we also need to talk, think about reliability and having redundancy. So, uh, providing a backup unit if one unit were to go offline or equipment malfunction, maybe. We have to be able to meet maximum indoor use with a treatment unit out of service for backup. However, where there could be a policy decision is what's the right level of redundancy or reliability for, for full irrigation? Maybe that's not with a treatment unit out of service, for example. Next slide, please. Uh, managing our risk was our second category. And, uh, we're, we're thinking things like the construction-related risk, short-term risk related to having, having construction activities while a water treatment plant is in operation. The second is, uh, we are talking long-term risk associated with operational risk as a treatment plant becomes harder to operate and there's a greater potential for error and potential regulatory excursions. Third, next, oh, yes.
Um, when we had the, uh, water roundtable with some of the former utility folks and, um, city managers, they talked about a longstanding IGA that I've never heard of before where the cities, um, help support each other if there's something that happens in, in their watershed or with their water supply. Is that something that we can learn more about at some meeting in the future? Because I imagine that I would certainly be interested in knowing what that actual agreement is and how functionally if something happened? Because if we're talking about, uh, managing potential short-term impact and risks or long-term, I think that would be valuable part of the conversation.
Of course.
What do you mean by harder to operate? What was that second bullet about?
Yeah, um, so I do have an example. Uh, one example may be providing some, um, some design provisions inside the water treatment plant or diverting water away from the distribution system, for example. So there might be various points in the treatment plant that would allow operators to divert the water out. Maybe, maybe water quality has suffered or an equipment has malfunctioned in some way and what, and operators would like to, to have the flexibility to, um, discharge that to, you know, for example. So having that ability to discharge the water, divert it so that all of the water doesn't have to go into the distribution system, that would be one example.
So you mean post-implementation?
Mm-hmm.
It's a more sophisticated system, so there's a risk of error because of that?
That, that's right.
I would have thought under this category, you would have had, do we want to put ozoneation in the process? Because it's my understanding, ozone, we have a water train and there are various steps in the water train. And one of the steps we looked at in this pilot plan we ran, we pumped ozone gas into it to bleach the water and take things out. But that's a pretty complicated thing and an expensive thing and uses liquid oxygen. Okay? And if it's only for bleaching and if we have a whole bunch of junk in Clear Creek, we just close the gates and we don't have to worry about that, that makes the system easier to operate because we've taken out that complicated liquid oxygen part of it.
I, I, well, yes, I, there are things that we're trying to separate out here with, in terms of water quality concerns and being able to treat the water and what tools are available to operators to treat changing water quality conditions. And then there's, um, uh, also design flexibility. Like, like where is, where are the chemical feed points in the treatment plant? For example, are there, are they placed in a, in a place where, are there enough? And are they in the right place type of thing? And, and are there provisions to divert the water away, um, from the distribution system? And, and trying to keep the water quality and treatability, that's coming up in a, in another slide. Um, and hopefully that helps clarify the two that I'm getting at. I'm not sure. That did help?
Me.
Okay. All right. Um, so, looks like we're, so next, okay. So going back to the construction, managing our risk. This is another view of our 3D model. And it's of the Semper facility. You've got the two sedimentation basins kind of in the front and the filter building behind it. Off to the left, that red building is the chemical building. There is a blank space, a blank space in front of that chemical building. That's where the lagoon backwash basins are. So you'll have to imagine the big basins there. Um, but this kind of speaks to construction on an active site where there's, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of pipelines that would need to be coordinated with our operations staff. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, resiliency was the third, a third category. And we're talking about here are, what's the adaptability of the treatment plant for future regulations? Um, this might be where the ozone, Councilor Baker was talking about where, you know, you have a tool, might be ozone in this case, and it may be more adaptable to treating for future regulations if new parameters were to come up or maybe more stringent parameters. Um, a second, a second option under this resiliency category is, what is the ability of the treatment plant to, um, kind of take up some slack? If, with an upstream process malfunctions in some way? So maybe an example would be your, your solids removal pump goes down and your sedimentation basin, that's excess solids going from your sedimentation to your filters. How, how able are your filters to take up the excess, uh, solids? Um, third thing to think about under this resiliency category is what is the ability of the treatment plant to meet challenging raw water quality? the ability of the treatment plant to meet challenging raw water quality? So the raw water quality changes, how adaptable is the treatment plant to managing that? Next slide, please.
But when I think of resilience too, I think of like long-term resilience and how we're setting ourselves up in the future, kind of like Mayor Protom's point on, what is, what are the options 50 years down the road? And what is this, what path does this send us down? So let's say if we rehab the building, you know, the facility as is, how does that set us up for needs in the future? You know, the improvements in the future, like is there something kind of lingering down the road versus other options? You know, this sets us up better or we can, you know, this lasts for 50 years and we only have to rehabilitate it. You know, just trying to understand that piece. I don't know if that's part of the other infrastructure.
I, I think, yeah. Can I come back to that a little bit?
Yeah.
And maybe talk more? Okay. Okay. So a fourth, a fourth category would be water quality goals. And, um, that would be kind of over and above what would be required by regulations. There's, there's room for policy decisions here. A good example under water quality would be taste and odor. And, um, and basically there's two factors that would affect our finished water quality and, and our taste and odor of our finished water. Those are, what are the, what is the raw water quality coming into the treatment plant? And what are the treatment processes available at our disposal to treat those parameters? Those raw water quality parameters? Next slide.
Sorry. This just made me think of, you know, the other night when we were getting our, um, our update on the street's infrastructure and we have a PQI. And right now, we're only putting half as much as we need to in terms of, maintenance on our street system. And that impacts obviously road quality over time. So I'm just curious, for water quality, how much does the facility itself and what's happening there, control for water quality and taste and odor versus our pipelines and delivery system in terms of its age, its quality, that kind of thing?
Much does our treatment plant affect water quality versus?
Like, let's say we make it all clean and delicious in Semper. But then it travels through like old creepy pipes that we haven't put enough money into maintaining over time.
I see. Yes. So there is a component to what, what leaves the treatment plant versus what happens in the distribution system. And, uh, we try hard to control the age of the water. That would be most related to how long the water sits in the distribution system and sits in the storage tanks. And as it sits there, water quality can change over time. And a key aspect of that is, is managing the age of the water in the distribution system and making sure there's turnover. Trying to optimize the time in the, in the tanks, basically.
Amy, I know I said I wasn't going to say anything.
No, that's okay.
I'm going to say something anyway. One of the things about the distribution system, and there are leaks, we know we lose about 7% of our water to water main leaks a year. It's very important that we keep the distribution system pressurized. That means water's leaving our system, which is not great, but it's better than water coming into our system. And so where that comes into play, as it comes in terms of the water plant, and to Amy's point about needing to make sure that we can treat for indoor demand, if for some reason we had more demand than what the plant was keeping up with and we drained our tanks, then all of a sudden there's, those pipelines are not pressurized anymore. And we can have that water come into the pipelines and create an unsafe situation. But as it is now, we have a very robust program of sampling water quality all across the distribution system to make sure that it's safe in all parts of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself.
That was good. Yes, so I guess before I move on to this slide, I did want to, uh, say one more thing on the, on the raw water quality and treatment processes and add that some, the, the city has been fortunate over time and historically that the Stanley Lake water source has been a very clean and clear, high-quality water source. And so we've had the benefit of high raw water quality. And so our finished water quality has been also high, and that's been helpful. As we talk and, and Councilor Namela, this, I did want to speak more to your question. But as we look at water quality and as our, there are several treatment processes available to, at our disposal to treat for taste and odor. And, but they kind of work on a varying degree. Some are better than others. And, and so as raw water quality may degrade, we may need additional or different treatments. So city uses now per minute eight, and that works pretty well for the raw water quality that we have right now. If that quality were to degrade and maybe Stanley Lake become impacted with algae, for example, to a higher level, then we would have more compounds or maybe greater concentrations to deal with. And that's where we start looking at, well, do we need additional treatment? Do we need activated carbon maybe or ozone? And the timing is, is, that's one of the things. Is the time right now? Or is it maybe we allow ourselves some flexibility to add a step out? Or let's, let's add some treatment when the time is right? So when we talk about policy, there's a few things here that I wanted to just kind of bring up, and that really was, what is the, the finished water quality level that we are aiming for, for taste and odor in the city? And second, when are we, when do we want to install the treatment? Maybe it's added now or implemented after. And, and also wanted to point out that customers can manage taste and odor at their faucet with things like a Brita filter or a ARO filter at their taps. Next slide, please.
Good question. These categories are, is that the framework of how you'll present these options to us? Within the context of these categories?
Yes, when we go to evaluate the different options and alternatives, then we would be presenting them kind of relative to each other based on these categories.
So you're going to score them in some way? Or you'll give us some kind of quantitative view of these categories for these options that we can sort of guide us?
That is the, um, that is where we were going with this is we'd have some kind of quantitative evaluation using these criteria with your help and, um, score them appropriately based on those criteria. So yes, the fifth category, infrastructure lifespan. So the idea here is we want to optimize our existing infrastructure before we, we buy new infrastructure and figuring out, well, where's the balance in risk and benefit of, um, buying new versus extending the operation of the existing? And the example here, um, or the analogy is when you buy a new car. And first you buy the new car and you've got just your basic maintenance, maybe some oil changes once, twice in a year, tire rotation. And then as your car ages, five, 10, 15, maybe even 20 years, you're going in and your, your, your visits to the shop become more and more frequent. And maybe now instead of oil changes and tire rotations, you're getting told, oh, now I need a new transmission. And so now it's a, a major cost. And is this, is the right time to replace the car? Or if I put in the new transmission, what's the, what's the risk that, well, now something else is going to break and I'm still stuck with my old car? So that's, that's what we're here to help you with and make that decision. What's, what's the right time for the waters, for the water treatment plant? Are we going to keep what we've got? Are we going to replace it? Next slide, please. So, so we've talked about a condition assessment underway. We've made a lot of progress on that as well as the significant effort to complete that 3D model. And right now we're working on developing the alternatives and the options to answering the questions as well as evaluating what's the right treatment capacity for the treatment plant with your help on the policy decision. We'll be coming with, coming to you for more input and more decisions and soliciting more feedback. So we'll be here, um, next meeting is scheduled in May. And with that, I'd like to ask if there are any other questions or if we've, um, going back to the, uh, policy categories, if there are other things that you think we've missed? Yes, Councilor Namela.
Just wondering, is there any opportunity for community outreach regarding the policy decisions before, so that we could hear from people and then kind of fold that into our, our thinking?
There may be some, um, I would have to coordinate and, uh,
One of the things that we're struggling with is that four and a half months is a really, really tight timeframe for us to complete this. But we can talk about it internally and see what we can do, um, if that's a request of council. Councilor Baker?
Have we already decided about the capacity? I mean, what's to decide about capacity unless you divide Semper in half and make 22,002, 22 million gallon a day plans? I mean, you already made a decision in Water 25 when you wanted to build 30 of the million gallon a day modules. That was already decided. And we only have at the optimum 23,000 acre feet of water to treat. We can't go above that. We can, we can make more capacity, but what's the point? We don't have water. So what's the deciding capacity?
We did want to take another look at capacity and look for, um, cost-saving measures. If there were places where potentially the full capacity may not be needed.
I think if-
If you're going to save money, I can look at that.
I think I, I think I heard your question and I'm, I'm going to try to answer what I think I heard. And that is, um, it kind of relates back to that maximum indoor demand. Amy pointed that out on the slide. That's one of the regulatory things we don't have as much of a choice on. And then there are some cities that identify, that's fine, but we want to know that if, if something goes wrong at one plant or in one module or one train, that we're not down to just that maximum indoor demand, but we can do something more than that. There may be cities that can treat full irrigation demand. Maybe cities like Out East where they get tons of water. I don't know. I don't know. But, um, or maybe there's a place somewhere in between. Those are policy decisions. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're bringing to you. And I think it would be weird if, if everybody in this room who's a policymaker decided, why, this is what we, we want. We want that minimum indoor or that maximum indoor demand. That's what you see in the winter plus another 10%. That's a, those aren't simple decisions, but I think as we get context with the kinds of solutions we bring to you, I think that'll help you bracket it and get a sense. And then Sarah pointed out, what happens if, if your demand exceeds what you can produce? Well, then your tanks get low. And absolute worst case, your, your pipes, your pipes don't maintain pressure. And that water she's talking about coming in, that's groundwater coming in from the outside. And of course, that water is not disinfected. That, so, so we don't want that in our distribution system. Now that's not like, you know, the end of the world catastrophe. There are measures to manage that because we know that there are times when we have watering restrictions and that has to be managed. So there, there are tools that the city has and it's, any city has as, at its means. So I don't, I don't want to try and push you in one direction, but maybe I can help paint that picture for you a little bit because those are real. Councilor Namela?
Yeah, I was just going to say, or ask, is it minimum capacity, operational capacity versus the capacity of Semper? Like if something, like the redundancy piece, that's like if we had to shut down and go to one facility, like that's sort of how I was seeing the policy decision being made is what is our, our minimum operating capacity? What are we building to in terms of risk? And then-
You have some choices. You definitely have some choices on that. And just kind of, and, and I didn't want to get ahead of these, of these alternatives that the engineers are working on. But kind of the way engineers think is, um, something called firm yield. So in a pump station, you have X number of pumps that can operate. What if one goes down? Let's plan on one pump going down. In a distribution system, we were here two weeks ago, what if one of the pipes fails? We have other pipes in the distribution system that will meet the demand in the northern part of Westminster. That kind of thing. So we have some reliability in the system. A reasonable amount of reliability, not excessive, but at least to have one thing go down. And that's where the trains, the modularity comes in. So maximum indoor demand, that's your winter demand and and irrigation, Sarah can attest to, just as the difference between indoor demand and irrigation demand in, in any city out here in this part of the country is, is huge. So, um, so there's, there is room for policy decisions. And those are, those are councils, council's decisions to make.
Anyone else? So what do you need from us precisely tonight? Do you need what was on page seven? Or are you, with the discussion, are you okay to move ahead? What, I want to be sure you have what you need to move to the next step.
Our main goal here was to make sure that we were keeping you updated, get feedback on these policy, where we're categorizing, categorizing these policies, decisions, and make sure that we were on the same page with city council, that this sounded appropriate and make sure that we weren't missing things. We've written down a few things that have been brought up today and, um, really make sure that you're familiar with where we were headed. We want to get into maybe greater detail and more discussion about these policy topics in our next meeting. Uh, for tonight, I think we have what we were looking for and can move forward and be ready to talk in more detail next time.
I guess one else. I think one else we would have is as, as, as you look at this material and listen to it and think about it, if there's something that pops into your head after tonight, for example, that you're like, that might be something we wanted to consider as a policy decision, that would be helpful for us to have that in advance. We can also be bringing that in. And sooner than later, but obviously we'll certainly be circling back with you in May. But as you have those ideas, if there's something that jumps out at you, I would greatly appreciate it.
Which is, you know, ideally we would have had a, a community task force to help provide some- provide some input on this, um, this, on this approach and decision, ultimate decision. I don't know if it would be helpful to have, um, the environmental advisory board, um, provide some input. But we'd have to have them kind of understand at least with the policy parameters.
Okay, could you give me an example of really what they might provide that would change your mind?
What are they, what are they having input on if we don't have that in?
I'm seeking to have broader community input on the, on the solution. And I am trying to find venues for that and we have an environmental advisory board.
This isn't something that they've dealt with before?
I, yeah. But there's policy decisions too that'd be helpful for the community to weigh in on. So I don't know how to...
Okay, but in one sense, haven't we made them all before? Didn't they do all this before we did Water 2025? Was this all done in back in 2018?
With the community?
No, I mean the policy decisions. Didn't somewhere in 2018 someone decide, we're, instead of making a 44 million gallon a day water plant like Semper, who can provide the entire city during irrigation, we're only going to build a $30 million a day plant, which means in the summer, we have to run both plants?
Our residents didn't make that.
No, but the council did. Somebody in engineering did. Because that's how they sized them.
But without a community process.
Right, without a community process.
That's all I was hoping to have.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make a comment that I really appreciate this presentation and how you approached it. Specifically that you had the, you know, that I can follow your thought process that here are simple things that we can do that we're looking at. Here's the more complex things. And that type of discussion is very, very welcome and I appreciate that that's the approach you're taking. This really, uh, helps me feel like we're, we're all moving in the same direction. Did you say May was the readout or is that just another update?
That'll be another update.
When is the readout, the final?
We're scheduled for August, August 8th, I believe.
To show us the options?
Oh, the options, um, no, we'll be getting into that more.
We probably don't have a date for you quite yet, so we don't want to.
I thought it was June target date. Yeah, yeah, I thought it was June too.
I would like it to be June. Putting words in their mouth if I said exactly when and I, I just, that's not fair. I'm not going to do that. Are we paying a extra? A lot more information for you in May, definitely updating the timeline. Great, and maybe not all options will fall out at the same. I don't know, some might take more work than others. I suspect that may be the case.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work in helping us get all the words together that, uh, so we're on the same page. But great presentation and thanks so much and we look forward to next one.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Be safe going home.
Well, some of us are sticking around for the next summer.
We get to stay for exec sessions too. Um, and we'll take a quick five-minute break.
Okay.
Before we go to executive session.